All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call Nelson Reifman.
Yeah.
Robert Hammond.
Here.
Larry Seer. Bina Shade.
Here.
Jim Steele.
Here.
Aaron Wilson.
Here.
And Bill Wilson. Does anybody, does anybody here have anything to say before we go into our meeting?
Yes. He's in charge of 911.
As the county commissioner.
I tried to call the chief one day. There was another guy and there were lady at tonight. But this guy is always calling when I call. I call, I said, I wanted to talk to the chief about something else and then about, I had bad gas leak. Who knows? We have bad gas leaks down there. So he, he don't want to talk to you and hung up on me. It's not his, for all the, you know, I need to talk to somebody. But I won't call nothing. I'm always calling stuff and about the police, something going on. I won't call anymore.
Why don't you talk to the commissioners? If I talk to the commissioners, then I would talk to Phil Lucas, who's, Phil Lucas is in charge of 911.
Okay.
But if you go through the commissioners, they'll go to Phil Lucas.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Hold on, I got, so. Hey, sir. 717-248-9607 is our police dispatch.
Yeah, that's the non-emergency.
Right, right. If you need to call them, any maybe non-emergencies, 248-9607.
That gas leak might have been for the fire chief, isn't it?
Pardon?
That would have been for you.
Yeah, the gas leak would have been for the fire chief, not, not the police.
The name is bad.
Well, that's, that's the emergency number that he called probably to. Yeah, they'll contact me.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll call on Chastity Folks.
Good evening. I am here to conduct the first public hearing for the federal fiscal year 2023 CDBG funds. For those who don't know, CDBG stands for Community Development Law Grant. This fund, or this program is funded through the Department of.
Is it, has people signed in?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Yes. So if, here, Kim, you haven't signed in, please do. Thank you. So the CDBG program is funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. It has been administered through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, also known as DCED. The program is designed to assist municipalities and counties in viable communities by providing suitable living environments, decent housing, and by expanding economic opportunities for principally low-to-moder income residents. Income limits are established through HUD. We don't have our allocation for federal fiscal year 2023 yet, but based on last year's allocation, I'm estimating that Lewestown Borough will probably receive $145,400, of which $123,600 will be available for project costs. The remaining $21,800 goes to the county and that covers staff costs, advertisements, anything that we need to administer to the program and do all the paperwork. It's all required for all of this. The schedule for this year for the CD, or I'm sorry, actually, let me go into what kind of projects and who is eligible for the types of funds before I go into the schedule. So as I said before, this program principally benefits low-to-moder income individuals. We have to show that 70% of the funds are being spent on projects that will benefit low-to-moder income people. We can also spend money on slum blight elimination and we can also spend it on urgent need. Those are typically like a weather-related incidents, something like that. It could be, you know, something like a building in danger of falling down immediately. There's a lot more strings involved with CDBG funds, so we don't usually use CDBG funds for urgent need, but it is a possibility. The types of projects we fund are improvements to water and sewer projects, single-family residential housing rehabilitation for income-qualified families, demolition of blighted structures, roadway improvements, ADA modifications, or removal of architectural barriers to public facilities. And we can also use the funds to pay for public services that are either new or provide a quantifiable increase in their services. The county gets their own portion of funds. Lewestown Borough, along with Armel, Brown, Dairy, and Granville Townships also receive their own individual funds as well. Some of the things that I didn't mention, as to some of the other areas, prohibited activities that we absolutely cannot fund are anything with buildings for the general conduct of business. So we can't do anything there. We can't pay for any general government expenses, political activities, or anything related to, directly to that of those things.
Do you know, if, if we're estimating 145,400, what's estimated amount for county this year?
$223,100. And it's based off of population. As soon as a municipality reaches a population of 4,000 residents by census, then they receive their own allocation.
They get to own that? Okay.
Mm-hmm. And then the county cannot use the county funds in, like Lewestown Borough or the other townships that I had mentioned. But we can do fair share projects where we would put in our fair share portion based upon the percentage of population of residents residing outside of these OBOs. That we call, we call MBOs because we're, we administer the grant funds on behalf of Lewestown Borough and these other townships. We will work together to come up with project ideas, get cost estimates, prove the need, and we will officially have a second public hearing and officially adopt the resolution at the September 13th council meeting. The county commissioners then have a second public hearing at their level as well, and they then adopt the resolution to actually adopt all of the projects throughout the county and all of the OBOs for whatever projects that we handle. That will take place October 5th. And I, like I said, we haven't had all these, the announcements yet, but the application will be due to DCED sometime by the end of October. They are going to accept competitive applications as well this year. It is a minimum of $100,000 request. There is no maximum. It still has to qualify by the CDBG rules, but you know, if you have a large project that you can't fund even with two years of funding of CDBG, we can go after a competitive project. Those applications are due to DCED by early February of next year.
Is that those ones I talked you about where it goes to the county and you guys help us prepare, kind of thing?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, all right. That's a big project.
It is. It is a big undertaking for those as well.
Now, this money estimated 2023, the 145,400, sorry, I'm usually talking to you all the time, but this is money to be, that could be spent this year or is that to be done in 2024?
We will put the application in in October. That's by the end of October. So for a good example, we still don't have their contract from last year's application at this point. There's just some delays down there right now. They're hoping that we have it by the end of May. I don't know if it'll happen that quickly or not. And then once we get the contract, we have to set things up through the electronic systems back and forth, and then we have to do environmental reviews. So it's typically not actually available to a year after we submit the application. So these funds for, that we're going to find a new project for, for this year's application, probably won't actually be available to be spent until the end of next year.
So maybe I'm confused here. This wasn't the money we were going to use for the Fifth Street slip lining project?
No, no, this is why we have a new one.
Okay, I got this old new one. Okay.
Yes. And while you brought that up, because we, I can talk about that now because that's what the CDBG public hearing is all about. We just found out about two weeks ago that the last year's application project was to do slip lining of the sewer on Fifth, along Fifth Street and some of the other side streets through there. It passed through our grants manager, went on to other levels, and when it got to the top, they looked at it and they said it is actually an inflow and infiltration project that ultimately benefits the water, the sewer treatment plant. The sewer treatment plant actually serves, 40% of the users come from Dairy Township. A very tiny percent comes from Granville. So they told us that we would have to then do a survey of all of the residents that would actually are such. We could not undertake that. We just don't have the staff to do it. So as I was talking to you earlier about that, Kim, so it is still an eligible project. It's too much of an administrative undertaking for us to do a survey like that, unfortunately.
So we can use that CDB money for something else?
Yes.
Like paving?
Yes, yes. Reconstruction is a big. Pardon me? What was the amount of that project?
Four, basically 440 and, and maybe it was two. What was that, you know, Fifth Street somewhere?
I have the numbers.
I thought it was four or something. Maybe it was 324 or something. Because we're going to take the 124 out and then we see if we did 200,000 of it.
So the bids came in at $444,408 for just the base. That does not include all the elderly and adds.
Hold on. Are you talking Venus?
I'm talking the slip lining.
Slip lining, it was costing, yes, it was.
Oh, so the slip lining project, we were going to put $123,666 in from last year.
And the whole cost was how much?
The whole cost was 327.
That's what I thought. So we're, we still have 200,000. Can we do a section of Fifth Street? Or Fifth, yeah, Fifth, whatever. We could do like a 200,000 or $2,000 section, 200,000 dollar section of it. And then the 123 Venus would go toward helping pave the south side?
Yes. Can we pave the south side with CDBG funds? Yes, we can. There's no problem with road reconstruction. Okay. And like I said, there actually isn't a problem with the project of slip lining the sewer lines. It's the fact that we would have to do a survey of all of the users of the system, all of the households that go into the.
And that's the entire west side of town?
It's the entire borough. It's the 40% of the users coming from Dairy Township.
It's ridiculous.
It is. So we would have to survey everybody. And Lewestown Borough as a whole qualifies. So if only Lewestown Borough dumped into the wastewater treatment, we could still do it. Unfortunately, 40% come from Dairy. So we would have to survey everyone. And that just, I can just imagine how many households that would be, even if doing, with doing a random sample. Whenever we did the random sample survey to do the Walnut and Catherine Street Park project, we had over 500 households and we only needed like 60 some responses and it took forever.
Forever, just to get that.
So I can just imagine the numbers that we would need to have, like, say there's 8,000 people in the system. I mean, it would just, it would be an administrative nightmare. We just don't have enough staff to undertake that, unfortunately. But we can move those funds from the 2022 into the South Side paving project to make that a little bit more, a little bit, so it's not lost.
No, we need it.
Yes. So are there any other comments or questions? We openly invite the public to share ideas on project ideas that we could use these funds for. And the council can entertain those ideas as well. We have to prove eligibility and. It was being passed. Thank you. Can I get my papers? I have them. Thank you.
Top there question. I know it can be used for road reconstruction to that, but alleys?
Yes, yes. Because we will prove the benefit, who the people are that are using them. So we want to look at, so I know the alley down here is used by a lot of people who have a town. That would not probably be one, because we have to look at who the primary users are. But if you get a section like where we're doing the South Side paving, that's kind of separated from Main Street. It's not that nobody else can use that, but primarily those residents are going to use that area. So I'm kind of thinking up alleys up that way. You know, they're going to be used by the residents who live up there, back on the other side of Valley Street. Yes, we could pave those alleys as well.
Windup sidewalks.
So sidewalks, because the council has a sidewalk ordinance, are the responsibility of the homeowner.
Okay.
So if there's no other questions or comments?
Nothing. Thanks, Chastity.
Thank you.
Call Robert Vargo.
May is a real popular month. To say so, I thank you to a lot of organizations, groups that do volunteer work throughout the year. And two that we're going to address this evening is the Tennis Association and also the Patriots.
Right.
Patriots. So I'd like to call Edith Etna. These girls are from the Mifflin County Tennis Organization. I told them when I had read over what all they have done, volunteer work, it's unbelievable. I had to sort of condense it into the proclamation. But these girls and their group are extremely busy and she had mentioned that they're always looking for volunteers to help. And it's definitely a very worthwhile project. Do a lot with the school district. I mean, it's a, it's almost like a full-time job. But it's very worthwhile and very rewarding, I'm sure. So the proclamation would read, whereas on May 21st, 1881, the USTA, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded to create rules and standards for the emerging game of tennis. Whereas the USTA is a nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States and leads the promotion and growth of its sport from beginners to professional at the US Open and is the largest tennis organization in the world with over 550,000 members. The local USTA partners with tennis programs to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis. Whereas the Mifflin County Community Tennis began in 2011 and has made tremendous impact in our areas such as assisting brownies and girl scouts to attain their sports badges, demonstrating and interaction with church youth groups and participating in Kid Connection. Whereas many hours are spent with students at Lewestown Elementary School, showing them the importance of physical activities such as tennis. Whereas the local tennis organization participated in a mission trip to Kenya with programs and equipment donated by the USTA for the creation of a high school tennis team there. Whereas the USTA declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage and promote local tennis programs and the benefits of the sports. Now therefore I, Deborah Vargo, Mayor of the Borough of Lewestown, proclaim May 2023 as National Tennis Month and urge our citizens to be aware of the importance of this program and sign and seal by me.
Could you give a still picture of this?
I can pull one from it, yeah. Absolutely, yeah, just stay there.
Can you see the, like?
Yeah, just kind of hold still once. Yeah, we can, we can see it all.
Here.
Deb, you want to get in there?
Yeah.
Okay. That'll be good. I can pull one from that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Should I give you my phone number?
Uh, yeah, if you can leave, actually, if you have an email, I could just send it to you then.
All right. Okay, thank you.
A gentleman here from the Patriot Riders.
We have somebody taking pictures.
Something wasn't he on the ten times, so.
I use point shoot.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Proclamation. Whereas the local Patriot Riders Chapter 53 of ABID organization was created in 2012. Whereas our area has benefited much from their tremendous success in raising funds for charity. Whereas most often concentrating on fundraising efforts for children in all of Mifflin County. Whereas we appreciate all those in this organization for the many hours of volunteering and making a difference. Your safety is important to us. Whereas ABID is the Alliance of Bikers aimed towards education, an organization dedicated to the protection of motorcyclists. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people. Whereas motorists are reminded of the seasonal return of motorcycle enthusiasts to the roadway. Whereas motorcycles may easily be overlooked due to their size, motorists are encouraged to always be aware. Now therefore I, Deborah Vargo, Mayor of the Borough of Lewestown, along with the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, proclaim May 2023 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Sign and seal by me.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Considering that ABID is, we're the ones who gave the bicycles away for like the last six years, but we did suspend it this year because of the economy. People have to eat at home, feed their family to get to work. It's just, it was, it was tough last year. I'm thinking, I don't want to put that burden. So our new charity is the Bob Perks Fund, if anybody's heard of it. But yes, what it is, is they have moved into Mifflin County and Juniata and Perry County, and they've been in Huntington, Blair, and Center, and now in Clarion. What they do is they give cancer victims $750 four times a year, apply through with your oncologist to help them pay bills, help them get through this time because they, they can't work. So bills pile up. I know it has worked. We got a family in Reevesville that they used it to pay their rent to the fire company. We just had a basket raffle in April and we raised $3,443. And it's, they're looking for sponsors. We're going to, we took on the challenge of being their, their advocates to try to make more people aware of some of the corporations and stuff in this county to actually donate money because they all have to give it. It's very important to us and I just lost a brother to cancer, so I know how devastating that can be to people. But if we can take that burden off the, off the table where they, you know, their rent, they're not going to be kicked out in the street or they have food to eat, this is, this is a worthwhile project. 80% of the money goes to the people and whatever we raise in Mifflin County stays in Mifflin County. It doesn't go anywhere else. So we're doing our part and hopefully somebody else gets on board. You know somebody with cancer struggling, get ahold of Bob Perks Fund and their oncologist has to apply and within a week or so, they have the funds. Not to the people, but to whatever entity they, they need, their, their rent or food or whatever. So it's a good program. But I want to thank Mayor and the Borough Council and please look twice and save a life. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Goodson.
Oh, yeah, I do that all the time. We'll walk away.
So is Bob.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. I'll see you nationally later. Okay? Thank you.
I need approval to approve of minutes. Concerned agenda?
Second.
One favor?
Hi.
Close. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Robert, the manager.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Going through the quick list here under, under one through nine. Rec Park Community Pool, advertising banner update. We have about $6,000, I believe, $5,800 worth of banner requests. That's still in the process of being worked. That money will hopefully go toward helping pay the pool chemicals for, you know, the summer's use of the pool. Lifeguards, front desk personnel. We have 10 returning lifeguards and four new applicants. The good thing is the 10 returning lifeguards that are coming back, we don't have to pay for the Red Cross training. It's already good for them. So we have four new applicants, which is like about 800 bucks to, to get those guys certified. And we have nine returning concession staff and three new applicants. Doesn't mean we're going to hire all 12, but that's what the status is right now until we break it down for the personnel committee. The Rec Park Pool Study is a viable study that's ongoing. They contacted me right before I left. I have to do white paper and provide it to them, DCNR, on who all was contacted for this study, who all responded, who didn't respond, what they responded, where did they respond, you know, how the council will decide who we picked, et cetera, et cetera. So I have to put that together. And it requested one-year extension for the study to go through 2024. But that is ongoing. Lewestown Fire Department Chief Position, we have five applicants. We'll move forward with that when the council decides to do so. And the chicken ordinance, we talked about that at the last ordinance, or sorry, the last law and ordinance meeting, and it was decided to bring it to the council meeting for discussion at this council meeting. No decision was made or for recommendation as such at the law and ordinance meeting, if I remember right, that they decided to bring it to the council so enough members could discuss it. So I'll leave it at that and leave it open for the council to discuss if they want to do that. Does anybody here have any discussion from the audience about chickens?
I did a little bit more research and I also typed up some stuff regarding from last meeting. Some of it was like the benefits of chickens, which I had on the last one, how they're good for pests. That there is a way that it could bring some income into the borough because you could require like a license for, kind of like we have dog licenses. So that would bring some income in. It would kind of regulate who has chickens.
Always stops with the lawyer.
Give them to the lawyer.
I also have in here that a lot of chickens, I know the Academy is always looking for fundraisers. So the act program could potentially use chickens as a potential fundraiser because they could sell chicks to the community. Encourages children to join 4H. We are a very large 4H community. Currently, farmers are on decline. This encourages our children to potentially become farmers in the future and gives hope to the farmers. I know concerns during the law and ordinance meeting was like cats entering and attacking chickens. Some of that, you can create fully enclosed coops and runs to prevent any outside animals from getting in. I know there was also like residents who don't take care of properties currently or buy by certain ordinances. I kind of sat down and thought that through because I know a lot of ordinances I've seen from other areas, it had to be single-family dwelling homes. So that would cut out any of the doubles apartments and such in the community. Then whenever you sit down and you look at how many of those homes actually have homeowners in them and how many of them are rentals? Because a lot of landlords probably are not going to allow chickens on their rental properties because if the person moves, can they even take the chickens with them? So that's mostly going to focus on how many properties have actual homeowners in them that would be eligible as well as how many properties are even large enough. Because I know like, like with the fires and such, they have to be so far away from residences. There has to be a certain size for coops and runs and such. So how many properties can accommodate that? I know I somehow luckily got a property that has almost an acre in town. So my property could more than accommodate a decent amount of chickens. A lot of people are concerned about noise with chickens as well. And I know myself and a few of the others that have discussed chickens, it would be that there would be no roosters because those are the noisiest of the bunch. As well as that's whenever you're going to have extra little baby chicks running around. I know there was some concern about possible staffing to enforce the laws and ordinance with it. With the amount of residents who would be capable of housing chickens, there may not be enough people that you would need extra staffing. However, if you require a license, if you require people to pull permits to get coops and runs, this could potentially bring in the extra income that if extra staffing was needed, it could potentially cover that. And like as far as the licensing, like dogs, it could be every so often you have to renew your license and there could be a certain cost for how many chickens. Whenever I went through the list of counties within Pennsylvania, 44 out of 67 counties of Pennsylvania currently allow chickens. Some of the ones that do not allow chickens yet are currently in the midst of discussion with that. As I've seen, there was, I think it might have been in Clearfield or Chester County, I believe, just back in April, they approved chickens within their county. So it has become a very popular discussion, a popular thing amongst Pennsylvania, as I know Pennsylvania as a whole is a very large farming community. The second page I've attached there is just like some ideas with keeping of chickens, upkeep, storage, obviously no slaughtering, as well as some like the violations, like what you could do to enforce. Obviously, that would change based on how you need to go about that. Like chickens would have to be kept in single dwelling homes, no roosters, chickens must be kept contained. So no free-range chickens. Because I know that is a very big concern for people. I know like if I didn't want chickens, I want somebody else's chickens on my property. And they don't need to be running out on the roads and destroying other people's properties. Obviously, like they need to be away from people's homes because no neighbor's going to want. because no neighbor's going to want a coop stuck up towards their property that they really don't want there. Um, there would be that you could have to get a permit and license. Um, chicken feces must be removed before it's a health hazard. And whenever I did some research, that chicken feces, you pretty much dispose of like cat litter. It has to be double bagged. You can put it out in the trash. It could be composted, um, for gardens and such. Um, chicken feces could also be donated to farmers or like the Ag Program. Because I know the Ag Program does a lot of growing of crops and the chicken feces can be very, very good for the crops. Um, there would also be like chicken feed would need to be kept in sealed containers to try to prevent like mice and everything getting into it. And then just the no slaughtering and then some ideas of like that there could be fines and such if people do not abide by the ordinance.
Just to follow up from the Law and Ordinance Meeting, um, the borough did advertise a chicken ordinance back in two thousand and twenty. It had a lot of similarities with the ones that, that were distributed at the last Borough Council Meeting. Um, I can provide anybody with a, a copy of what, what happened back in two thousand and twenty. Uh, it was not adopted at that time. And I think that's one of the reasons why the Law and Ordinance Committee thought perhaps send this to council to see what the feelings of council are, if there is interest in moving forward with, um, advertising and considering a, a chicken ordinance now.
Any discussion, Oliver?
Approximately how many properties in a borough do you think would qualify under your restrictions?
Maybe it would depend technically on how the borough would go with the guidelines on how far they need to be from a residence.
If you're, if you're saying twenty-five feet from a residence, okay, there's twenty-five feet to the middle. Now there's another twenty-five feet to Bob's house. So you basically have to have fifty feet of cleared space, right?
Um, depends how, where the house sits on the property. Because, um, I know some properties run back to back. Um, I know just in my neighborhood area on the west end, there's probably a good fifty, seventy-five houses that probably could. I know a lot of houses are more so going to be on the outskirts of Louistown, have the larger properties. Um, because I know in-town wise, they're a much smaller property. So I know some of them can't even fully have fires and stuff because their properties, they can't put fireworks far enough away.
Just for reference, in the two thousand and twenty borough ordinance, it was thirty feet
Like little campfires.
Of any main building or, or an adjacent. Yeah, thirty feet.
The open burning, that thing, yeah.
I was talking about covered burning, like covered fires.
It has to be so far from the building and
They're not allowed to burn in the borough at all.
Can be propane or charcoal.
Yeah, propane or charcoal.
Oh, we need to talk to the people down the street from me then.
We didn't say it couldn't happen.
No chickens in the borough?
What's that?
Not to have any chickens in the borough?
There is nothing currently on the books that you can Oh, you can't make a motion.
You can make a suggestion to council.
So you're suggesting not to have chickens in the borough?
Yes.
So here, so I know you did great work on this. I really, hell, I'd give you a child if I could, okay? So this part down here is really good, but if you notice, it's all county. And county is full of farms, not inside towns. Do you have a list of all the boroughs that you know of that have this ordinance?
I could go through and dig those out.
I mean, because this is all county. We know counties can do them because they're out, you know, you know, farms and stuff like that. Boroughs like Louistown have more constraints on these kinds of things. Not only is it space, it's also, like you said on here, you know, the borough could hire more people, um, to, to monitor the licensing, the, the law enforcement, the code stuff. It costs a borough twenty-seven thousand dollars a year for one employee just for healthcare. You're not going to get that out of chickens, out of licensing fees and all that stuff. So it's, and that would be a losing proposition for the borough because it would cost the borough money. I like your thought process of what could be revenue, but that revenue wouldn't be enough, I don't think, to cover what it would be. Hell, I agree with you about having, I love eggs. I was eating them in South Africa every day when I say, make me eggs. So the bottom line is, um, financially, I don't know how it would work for the borough. I don't think, in fact, I know it wouldn't because the cost of what it is to maintain employees. Um, I don't know, but I'm not, I, I got the concept of having chickens and all that kind of stuff, but especially with no roosters. Chickens are different.
Yeah. I have a friend that raises chickens and she does not like having a rooster.
Yeah, I know. There's one outside my room. For the last two weeks, it kept me up all night. It just wouldn't shut up beginning of the night, so. I get it. So that's up to council on this one.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just have a question regarding, um, the solicitor's remark about the two thousand and twenty discussion. I'm not sure I understand what the thirty to fifty feet apart of, what, probably what you were referencing.
Just that, in the two thousand and twenty proposed ordinance, the setback from a, a building on, on another lot was thirty feet rather than fifty, just, just informational.
Would that be the same distance from neighbor to neighbor?
Uh, the exact wording was the coop shall not be within thirty feet of any main building
Okay.
on an adjacent block.
Okay.
So it could be within thirty feet of your house, but not your neighbor's.
Okay.
But that's, that's something that could be changed. I mean, that's not set in stone. I'm not saying that's right or wrong. That's just what was considered in two thousand and twenty.
And it really, this is brought up because she, she had twenty-five feet in her sample. That's why I was drawing.
Oh, okay. I just didn't generalize.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's where it came from. And that's what, that's what Mark hit on was, that's pretty close to what we talked about twenty, back in two thousand and twenty.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So it's over to you, Mr. Vargo.
Uh, any discussion? Any thoughts? Is anybody in, uh, favor?
No one's made a motion.
Go ahead, make it.
No, she said no one's made a motion.
No one's made a motion.
Which means nobody's in favor.
Yeah, nobody's in favor. So I think that, I'm not one to insult your chicken people, but more not in favor of having chickens in our borough. Yes, sir.
Unlock the bank report.
All right.
Well, I am.
Hey, I gotta be honest with you. I don't know, what's your name?
Amber.
Amber? No, Amber. Hey, you did a great job on this.
Thank you.
You really did. I mean, I mean, this is the kind of staff work I wish I could get, you know, from a lot of people. I mean, this is good work, so.
You are allowed to have chickens in the town, right? Okay, Mifflin County is our only, in this way.
Oh, that's true.
Okay, just the boroughs.
Well, you can't make a motion.
All right. That's not approved.
Move on to the Street Sweeper?
Yep.
Okay, Street Sweeper's still in for repair. I saw, I looked through my emails from the last couple of weeks. I saw some emails from some council members asking what the status is. Um, it was evac'd from here to where we purchased it in Harrisburg. And they did their initial analysis on it and then it was evac'd to another, uh, maintenance facility that can do the repairs on it. It's there right now. I, I got, I sent an email to the insurance company today asking what the update on it is as far as even the estimate for repair. I don't have anything back yet. Once I get an update back, I will send it out to council with an update. But until then, I don't have anything else on it. I just know it needs to be repaired from when it was damaged to about a year and a half ago. So it's not that we don't want to do the streets wherever, the, the Street Sweeper is just not running. All right, Cemetery Trust, okay? The tr- the cemetery at the end of Third Street, uh, it's, I, I've been told it's called the, the Black Cemetery, the Ames Cemetery. It's a cemetery with all the Civil War veterans in it. There's no, as I understand this, Mark, we talked about this, there's no delineated specific owner of the property. Um, however, there is a process we can go through, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, that the borough can get trusteeship of the cemetery and take over ownership legally. Um, and we already maintain it, clean it, cut it and all that stuff. You know, as a point of pride for the borough, for the, you know, the Civil War veterans, we do that. But legally, we don't have to. Um, but what we want to discuss from the Law and Ordinance Meeting is, does the Borough Council wish us to pursue this with Mark? To probably get some sort of quit, quit claim deed or something along that line for the trustee. I think we have to ask for trusteeship.
So here's, here's the situation. There, there's a trust that owns that cemetery that was, um, essentially a, a lot of like early African-American families in Louistown. The trust has been defunct for a very, very long time. It doesn't do anything. No one knows who any of these people's descendants are at this point. So what probably is the best course of action is something very similar to what we did with the, you know, the doctor's trust that had some, some funds that the borough was involved with, which is go to court and ask the court to appoint the borough an alternate trustee. Essentially, say this current trust isn't working. The borough's the one who takes care of this anyway. Um, and that's similar to what we did. You have to notify the Attorney General because they are involved in all trusts in, in the state. And it would involve, uh, probably going to court for a hearing. And then it would involve probably advertising a notice since we don't know who the current trustees are. It would be essentially their errors, signs, et cetera. So it's, it's very doable. I mean, I, I think that the state and the county court would probably be fine with the borough doing it, especially because of the reality that the borough is in fact, um, taking care of it and has for as long as anybody can remember anyway. And it is a, you know, a historical area. There are, uh, Civil War veterans in there interred, so it, it is something that, that, you know, is and of course you have the fact that, um, you know, you've had a community group come in who put a lot of time and effort into fixing that cemetery up, like essentially cleaning up, putting upright the gravestones. Um, Jenny Landis contacted me. The community group has been in touch with, um, Pete Seer, attorney. He has said that he would voluntarily do some, some work to try and get this done. I haven't talked with Pete about that, how that would work, et cetera. But that's another option the borough has. You can say to, to Jenny and her group, go ahead and, uh, contact Mr. Seer and see if he's, you know, able and willing to, to do this too. So the way I had left it with, with, um, Kim and Jenny is we're just not, I wasn't, I didn't do anything further with this. I just wanted to come back to the borough to take instruction as to how council wants to proceed.
So basically, we would need a motion and approval to proceed with gaining, uh, the cemetery trust for future use for us to maintain the, 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 the plot of land.
I'll make that motion.
Second, just, just a question. We're already doing that. What's the, I hate to say the benefit, what's in the question? Why, why do we want to take, become, like, what's the?
It's more or less tying up a loose end. You know, the, the borough already de facto is the trustee. They take care of it anyway. Um, now it's just kind of in limbo as to what the true ownership is. It would just be a combination of, you know, getting things kind of aligned as how they really are and the legal aspects of it and the borough's consideration that it's a historic, important, you know, property.
And that's a good question. The other piece that Mark kind of hit on there was boundaries. That there's always a discussion down there, who owns what, what part? At the time, we, we thought the borough owned it. Like, what does the borough own? So you see where they sell the flowers and stuff down there? That was always an issue with people, with them selling flowers because the traffic, you can't see in, pull in, out, that kind of thing. And we think that there's probably graves underneath that plot of land right there. So they had a discussion with the property owner down there and those people was going back and forth about who owns that piece of land as part of the cemetery or not. So in order for them to go through and get a survey, then it goes back to who owns the land. So if the borough can get the trustee of it, then the borough owns it, then, then the survey and stuff falls under us for the borough to own it.
My understanding is that, uh, the company of Borzito bought that and they tore it down. That's what I'm thinking.
The little, they'll need the used to be there.
Yeah, like the little gun shop.
Yeah, it's something, whatever, yeah.
So I think you'd have to go to Zito because I think they bought all the property from this as a gross.
Yeah, I think they did.
But it still doesn't mean that was a legal purchase if that, that was not theirs to purchase.
There's definitely a lot of issues there. I mean, it's, it's kind of weird. Anytime you get tax exempt property like this, you know, the titles vary. Frequently become kind of confused in the midst of time as to who owns what and where the borders are because since there's their taxes being paid, people don't care that much about them frankly, what it says.
Okay, so if you look at the screen, I was able to pull this up. The red, this area here is what's kind of in, in dispute. Correct me if I'm wrong on this stuff, Caitlin. I think you're involved in this.
Correct.
This part's been on dispute, but the, the visitor's center, Chamber of Commerce, went and had this survey and asked, did, did they go down and register this too?
Yes.
Yes, they went down and registered. This is the way it's supposed to be now. But then once they did the research, they found out, well, nobody really owns a property. That's why, why the search stuff.
Yeah, they all dated, dated from eighteen thirty. One time it was actually a church old property, which we then fixed, possibly was converted into a gun shop at that location. So it is very possible that the gun shop building was in fact part of the cemetery at one time.
Is Jenny's group interested in being, being a trustee themselves?
I don't think so. I don't really think they have any money to do that in turn, but I can't really speak for them either. I think the idea is the borough.
Because we already maintained it.
It's just the legal things to do.
We have a motion on the table.
Yeah, the motion is second. Uh, oh, in favor of, oh, we got a question.
How much money are you talking about to do all the research, the deep work and get it owed to the borough?
It's hard to say. I mean, if it would be fairly straightforward, you know, twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars maybe. It's always hard to tell. You never know what you're going to get.
I think that's if you do it.
Right.
Right, but it's here as a pro bono.
Yeah, that's what I was told by Jenny. He
That's the question if
You want to do pro bonos, right.
Yeah. I mean, what council's relationship with Pete would be at that point? I mean, you would have to figure that out in the s- between your sides and Pete.
Thank you for that question. This, I was going to ask it anyway, but thanks. That's, I just don't understand why spend the money if, you know, things are well enough the way they are, why not just leave them the way they are? Take on that, but then you have liability. And what happens, something happens there. Right now, we're free. If something happens over there, now something could get to the borough. I'm not a big favorer, but whatever you guys want.
I mean, I'm still going to have my guys cut it and everything unless council tells me to.
Yeah, I think it's probably that.
I think that's a good community service thing for the borough. We go in, take care of the cemetery. But as far as ownership of it, I agree with you on why. I don't think we need to own it.
What's your thoughts, Mark? Do you want to make that or just let it go with it?
I mean, it's really up to council.
It's up to council.
You know, the, the, the push from this is coming, you know, I guess from Jenny's groups. You know, they've put a lot of time and effort and I assume money into getting it in a, a much better shape than it was. And if you, if you looked back years ago, all these markers were knocked over and it wasn't in good shape. So now it is, it is looking much, much better, which is, is a nice thing.
Do you know when the borough took it over? I know that, that there was a church that used to take it.
The A M E Church, I think, used to do it.
Yeah, I, I don't know how long it's been, um, taking care of it by the borough. At, at one point, I think there was thought that, I mean, I guess because it's right across the street, the A M E Church, it was their cemetery, but just in the, the way ownership of it was set up, you know, over a hundred years ago, it was put in this trust, which isn't really that unusual. I mean, a lot of cemeteries are without trustees. I mean, I don't really have an opinion as to, as to what you should do. If council has a desire to own it, there's a path, I think, to do that. But that's really as far as I
Same as I was saying.
If there were, uh, potential grant funds, then it, you know, certainly makes sense for the borough, you know, to be involved in, you know, to own it. Because if you can't determine an owner, then I don't know if you get, you know, those grant funds, so those types of things are coming forward, I've seen recently, there's a real emphasis on African-American cemeteries. And African-American, you know, heritage and, you know, documenting them, so there could be quite a bit of, um, assistance available.
Yeah, Historical Society did a lot of the research and found out where the trustee stuff ended, like in eighteen, or something like that, so they're already involved in it. They passed out information to Jenny, Jenny got it thus.
They didn't want to own it themselves, though.
See, the problem with ownership comes the grass cutting and maintaining of it, that's why they can't do it, that's why, since the borough's already doing it, that's why they want to take ownership of it. Because that eliminates the responsibility of who's gonna cut it and maintain it. It's gonna eliminate the responsibility of who controls the boundaries of the property itself for people when they park on there and stuff. It eliminates the possibility of, if bodies are buried under that corner where the, the, the parked the flowers and stuff, then you don't desecrate the bodies if people are parking on top, you know? So it kind of just gives a finality to, to the borough that yes, we, we own that cemetery, it's our responsibility. For the legal issues and stuff that come up, that's why they had a survey, because it was a debate about who owned what. Um, that's how we got involved in it, so, I mean, I totally get where Bobby's coming from, you know, about the money and stuff. I totally get that. It's just making things legal, I guess, and if we can get Pete Seer, um, to do a pro bono, which is Jenny is saying, I mean, council, if they want, they could vote on it and say, we, uh, we can table it till next time, and then I can get with Pete Seer and talk to him or Jenny. Or they could vote on it and say, yes, as long as it doesn't cost the borough any money, or it doesn't cost more than a thousand bucks, or whatever, however they want to do it, or they just don't do anything. But I, I get all the points, and Bobby's right, you know, it's gonna cost money, I mean, I got that.
Do you think NIBI Media purchased all that property, Jim?
Mrs. Gross,
By the dairy?
Mrs. Gross bought all that property, there's the Old World area, and the last I knew she bought, the little gun shop.
That was in the front?
Correct.
Yeah.
Because they went in there and tore it down and built some holes in it, so. I would start with Mrs. Gross.
And there was a garage or something there and then?
There, there is a survey, the Jenny's group has a survey.
That's the one I just showed you, they went and got that filed and certified at the courthouse now. Bill Wright did that for free, dealt the cemetery, the visitor's center, so that's in now. So what we, we would take ownership of what's inside that red, those red lines.
Yeah.
Put that back up.
This is, this is the here, where they usually park and put their flower trucks and tents and stuff, right here.
Yeah, that's the cemetery.
Yeah, that's the cemetery. The space,
In the blue, uh,
It's a lot beside it.
Between the, yeah.
This is cemetery?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm calling it, this part here is where they used to park the trucks and stuff, so what they got re-surveyed was this right here.
No, I don't think.
No.
There are.
Because of my wife.
Yeah, so you can see that little line that's not in red, that's where the fence is around the cemetery, it does cut in a little bit, and that's where he's currently parked with the flowers.
Right.
The rest of the parking lot is in fact Anahans from the Royal Dairy.
Yeah, this is all part of the Royal Dairy piece right here.
Yeah. So we're just gonna take the stuff in red?
Right.
Correct.
That's what you're doing.
That's what we're maintaining already.
I think the gun shop is in that space between the red and the blue.
Right here.
Yeah, that's where it was.
That was right.
That was before my time, sorry.
I used to get my guns fixed.
And that's where we didn't own the gun shop.
Yeah. Yeah, she wasn't moving.
Maybe you see it better this way, blow it up a little bit.
Yeah, part of that building was in the red.
Uh, so, so are we saying that there might be graves under the blue?
That's what the Historical Society,
Under the red.
In the red.
Well, who knows, under the blue, but right here, we're talking about some, some graves may be underneath here, Historical Society. But we don't know, but I mean, we, we're looking, we found graves, I mean, way down, like at this bank over here and stuff, I mean, it's.
Wha- what it looks like from looking at the survey is that, that part there, there's a fence and it looks like essentially the gun shop parcel, I'll call it, encroached on the cemetery parcel.
And so what the visitor's center wants to do is like redo the fencing and stuff and make this really good parking for people who come when they visit the cemetery and, and they're putting a s- a special sign up, you know, they're getting donations to get a big sign put up and.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the academy is helping weld the sign or something, or whatever.
I think they, I think they were getting materials, something, they were doing it for them, so this is a big project for the Community Center Chamber of Commerce. They're asking us for their help and that's, their, their course of action is can the borough get ownership of it, trusteeship of it? So that they can deal with us directly and not a bunch of other people.
Why don't you talk to Pete Seer before you make a decision?
If, if there's insinuations that there's bodies in that portion of parking lot, does that mean there's gonna be excavating being done to see if there really are any?
The only way you can do that is truly.
The Commonwealth would be interested in historic or whatever from the Commonwealth would be interested in knowing if there were graves there.
That's scary.
Well, you can strap in straight radar, just turn it up.
Well, then who pays for that, if we buy it, we just can go do that.
That's what I'm getting at.
Right, no.
There's all kinds of like very specific laws in Pennsylvania having to do with these historic cemeteries too. So if you do take it over, you're going to be bound by those, whatever you do.
I mean, one option is what Bobby said, is we just continue maintaining it what we're doing and leave the ownership to somebody else and they can find it and keep it maintained.
Well, my concern would be, as Jim mentioned, that the funding to actually improve the property and make it more of a historical site for Mifflin County as far as our, uh, attachments to the Civil War and our African-American heritage that was present here in Mifflin County, so. If nobody owns it, that stuff can't happen.
You can't apply for it.
I mean, to me, it's veterans.
Correct.
I mean, we're telling veterans, we don't want your piece of property. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's all getting the, the piece of property that has all these veterans on it, under legal control of the borough. So nobody can do anything else on it.
Somebody suggested we table it, so we talked to Pete Seer and Jenny and, Historical Society.
Don't we have a motion on the table?
We do, and it was seconded.
You could rescind your motion.
I could.
What's that?
I mean, I, I, I will, I will.
Yeah, let's, let's call the question then.
I will change my motion to, to make it so that it's contingent on discussion with Pete Seer, Seer and his availability to provide pro bono legal work.
Okay.
Go in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Yep.
No.
Three to two.
So if Pete can't do it, then nothing happens.
I'm also gonna, Jacob worked for the State Historical Society last summer. I'm gonna see if he can use a contact to see what they can offer us to maybe bring up equipment on their own dime to see exactly where all the bodies are. Sorry.
That's up to my yard.
Cool for Jacob, okay, so I'll get Pete Seer and try and track this down. Fire convention is still on, no new dates, I do have the community center, I talked to our, our community center coordinator today, that is still blocked off from the fifth to fifteenth or something like that for the fire department's community center, so. Valley Street,
Oh, yes, I have a question, is Larry going to come and update us on things, I mean?
Discussion, there's been no discussion.
I agree.
I haven't had any.
It's, it's May and we don't have the particulars, things like that, it would be great to get Larry here for a meeting to update.
I thought he's over here, I have my things on the agenda.
Well, I'm kinda looking at you because you're the chief, I'm sorry, chief.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm here for you.
If you could mention it to him, it would be great, unfortunately, the last two fire committee meetings have had to be rescheduled, so we're kind of out of the loop and it'll be here before you know, you'll know, I'll come back.
I'll, I'll make contact, tell him his presence, request to the next meeting.
Okay.
So Valley Street Emergency Lateral Repairs. I'll give you the one over the world on this one, because that's really all we really need right now. There's lot, there's nine sewer lines on Valley Street that need to be repaired with the Va- uh, Valley Street Pendot Project. Four of those lines, um, are part of the utility responsibility for Pendot. So I talked to Pendot today, trying to track some of this down, and because those, four of those lines fall under the Pendot agreement to be signed, that means it's a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent share. So they can fix four of those lines, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five, they pay seventy-five, we pay twenty-five percent. The other five lines aren't involved in the Valley Street repair project with Pendot, it's not part of the utilities. We have to fund that ourselves. Now, the two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars on there is the initial estimate that we received from Hawbaker, who's doing all the repairs and the paving of Valley Street. So, the two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars is the one over the world price, that's just the max, it will do all nine lines. That's not taking into account what Pendot's gonna, because this all came up today, that's not gonna take into account what Pendot's share is gonna be, those four lines, et cetera. I have a follow-up meeting with Pendot and Don Diperry tomorrow to find out what the most recent information on this is gonna be, because I don't have an accurate dollar figure, but based on the two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars we're gonna discuss later on in this meeting, a resolution had to be done because it's an emergency situation. Why is it an emergency situation, it's because Pendot has Hawbaker on a timeline for the paving of Valley Street, which means they only have certain gates to meet to get this whole project done. Fixing these lines is constrained by that timeline. We went out for two other quotes and they came back and said they cannot do any work within that timeline. So, I believe later on here, we have a resolution from Mark, that basically, from the council, it says this is an emergency situation, so we're gonna accept this quote because we don't have time to go out for bid. We got two other guys, but they said they can't do it because of the timeline, so we'll talk about that once we get to that resolution. But the bottom line is, there are nine sewer lines that need to be repaired, and it has, it involves DEP.
Okay, I'm, Kim, so you said nine at two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, roughly two fifty?
Yeah.
And for those, seventy-five percent of it will be covered by Pendot.
For those four.
Right, so that's roughly Pendot would be paying probably about eighty-five thousand dollars
Correct.
for their portion. Okay, I'm just trying to grab my number.
No, you're gonna do absolutely right, so I have one here, uh, I did bring it up here.
The issue, of course, is that this number is ex- within the, the bid amount.
Right.
But the borough code provides a, uh, a exception under special emergency situations. But it requires the resolution that we're gonna talk about here.
Right. And this is the max, 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 he had to just get something done for us to look at, and this is the max, max, max. So it's not gonna be near this, the bottom line is, we gotta wait to talk tomorrow with Pendot to see, you know, an estimate of what those are gonna cost from them as well. They're seventy-five, twenty-five. And we know with all, everything under Valley Street's old, I mean, I got it, it's.
You know, that redo everything on Valley, or they gonna find more stuff later?
No, this is, this, that's a question, those nine are what we found with the cameras, so, we cambered all of Valley Street and that's the nine we found when we cambered everything. Now, am I gonna tell you we're not gonna find something else, as they work on that stuff, they may crush another line or something like that.
But if they crush it, it's on them, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I was at the meeting with Don and Pendot, or Hawbaker, he said they've cambered all the lines, that's the only ones they found. I said, is that gonna be it, he said, yes.
So that's FYI, now we'll get to the resolution here in a bit. Twenty-two Ridge Road demolition is about done, they're just in the cleanup phase now, just picking up the loose rocks and that kind of stuff, so that's almost done. Uh, two sixteen East Third Street, that's the extension we got, uh, to look at that house on, uh, Third Street up here. I got an email, I sent it to you right before the meeting, you probably didn't get it yet, but basically we have to have two council members sign off on the grant extension. And the email was from Venus and Dave Campbell. So I sent an email back and said, when I submitted my packet for the Binghamton property, I included in there the January minutes where we, where the council elected a new council president and vice president. So, do you want me, or do you want to have the vice president, president be the two signatories? Or does it still need to be Venus, even though she's not the president, vice president, because I said Dave has nothing to do with council anymore? So, I'm waiting for an answer on that, and I see CJ on that Venus because, you know, you're, you're on there, so.
I mean, I have to imagine the, the president, vice president.
Well, no, I know, but, but that's why I told her, that information was already given to her, but, you know, it's, it's fine. So that includes my notes up here right now, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. For the month of April, fire department responded to twenty-four incidents, five building fires, an off-road vehicle fire, grass fire, brush and rubbish, three medical assists, three motor vehicle accidents, the injuries, one without injuries, three carbon monoxide incidents, which we got a handle on that, uh, this was a place is owned by the Housing Authority. And our third trip there, we did pack up some readings. So, we documented it, reported it to Housing Authority, that apartment's not empty till they get things under control there. Uh, we had, uh, three lockouts, an animal rescue. I wasn't on that call, so I'm not sure what it was, it could have been a cat in the tree or a stock dog or duckies in the stream or somewhere, but, uh, we had, uh, one of those. We had a standby call assignment from H U A, and we had a call where it was canceled and routed, and two automatic alarms. But I do want to touch here for a minute. Back when, uh, April twenty-fifth, we, uh, got dispatched to a working house fire, six thirty AM on, uh, forty-two North Wall Street. I live around the corner, my response is pretty clear, my assistant, Chief Markley, was on his way home from work, so we were there within a matter of a couple minutes. At that time, fire was shooting out the front of the house, I mean, we had a major fire going. Uh, after everything was said and done, the place has been condemned. I had the State Police Fire Marshal win, Caitlin come up on behalf of the code's office. Uh, we had the Red Cross notify them, and I think they, uh, put up about seven people, I believe, eight people in places to stay. But what I really want to touch on, uh, the house had working smoke detectors. So, I talked to the parents, everybody's in bed. Uh, the father heard the, uh, smoke alarms going off, got the rest of the family together, and at that time, had a smoke condition on the second floor and bedrooms. They worked their way down the stairs until they got to the first floor, they had to go through fire conditions to get out. So like I said, I was there in a matter of probably four minutes. And when I got out there, if there's anybody in the house, they weren't able to get out. So fortunately, just got out there in time. But what I really, what I really stress on is the importance of working smoke detectors. Make sure them babies are working, because, uh, the fire department, State Police, Fire Marshal, myself, we all think that they wouldn't have worked the smoke detectors, we would have a big catastrophe on our hand. It's not so much that people don't have smoking, smoke detectors in their homes, but they don't work, that's what we're running to. The batteries are dead, or they take the batteries out, use them with something else. But I just want to really stress the fact that fire department's really gonna work on people when they haven't worked these back, working smoke detectors, okay?
Thank you, Paul.
Hey, Chief, real quick, hey, um, we were working on quotes for the boiler repair and heritage. The last quote we got was fifty-eight thousand, which is above the threshold of the twenty-two five that Mark and I, we talked about earlier. And so we were trying to go out and get bids on the repair, the replacement of that whole system down there. Because we just spent, I don't know, it was eight thousand or something, eleven thousand, no more than that, but to repair it, to at least get us to the winner, to the winner, not even through the winner. They sent me an email today saying that the last one they had ordered is backlog eighteen months to twenty-four months right now. But, I asked them if they're a Co-Stars, and they have a Co-Stars contract, just like the fire truck thing, so I asked them to give me a new quote with the Co-Stars contract number on there, so then I could bring it to council. That means we don't have to go through and do the whole bid process, which is taking months and months and months. So, that's where it stands right now, it's waiting, get, waiting to get a new quote back with Co-Stars, and once I get that, I'll bring it out to council for them to discuss if they want to use our money to get that done now so that we can begin to get the new boiler system put in down there.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, so as soon as I get something, I'll lay it out.
All right, thank you.
This just came up this afternoon.
All right, anything else?
No, sir, thanks.
Mayor?
I just wanted to, uh, tell you a little bit about our Mifflin Juniata County, uh, Borough's Association Dinner. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the chief, um, and, uh, president and, uh, or our manager for attending. Uh, we also had a special guest, uh, Judy Uh, we also had a special guest, Judy Land, or Johnny Landis, from the Juniata River Visitor Center. Rhonda Kelly was there from the chamber. John Brennerman and Laura Camp were there from Senator Judy Ward's office. So, it was nice to, to have them on board also. Uh, we had representation from, uh, Mifflint Town, Juniata Terrace, uh, McBay Town, and us. I think that was it. Uh, after the dinner, and I had a lot of good comments about the, uh, us getting together. They'd like, actually like to see it more often, not just, uh, the annual thing that, uh, PSAB requires. So, I might, uh, think about, uh, doing that. And when you go to these things, uh, like, like the conferences, um, the networking is unbelievable, what you, what you can learn uh, from each other. And, uh, we found that even in that group, uh, that evening, uh, it was the same way. So, I had several people say, you know, "Why don't we do this more often?" So, maybe I'll try to, try to work that out. Um, after the, the dinner, we did have a, a short, uh, business meeting. And, uh, one of the main things that we need to do in this annual meeting is the election of officers. So, um, the officers that were elected by the group. Uh, I was, uh, elected president again, and Vice President is, uh, Jim Steele. And our Secretary Treasurer is Roxanne McGinnis, she's the mayor of Mifflint Town. So, we have, we have pretty good slate of officers. But, um, let's see, what else? Uh, we had a, um, a Secretary Treasurer that had actually resigned from council. So, uh, she had been with us for forever, so, uh, I do appreciate, uh, Polly Dubin, she did a great job. She was from Mifflint Town also. So, I think that was it. Uh, meeting was adjourned at, uh, seven-fifty, but it was a good evening. Thank you.
Police Chief, Dave?
Okay, stat, excuse me, stats for April, we had five-hundred-and-thirty calls for service. Uh, officers read thirty-seven traffic citations, twenty-six non-traffic, issued sixty warnings, and twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty-one parking tickets. Uh, drug report for the month, uh, from our drug investigator, he had five active investigations, five new investigations. Uh, made two undercover buys, uh, one felony arrest, did four search warrants. Uh, seized approximately thirty-five bags of heroin and fentanyl, uh, nine grams of methamphetamine. And, uh, this week, within the past couple days, we've had two drug overdoses in the borough. That were both deaths, so. Still working on the drug problems. Um, we've completed our written portion of the civil service testing on April thirtieth, and now we're moving on to the oral portion, which takes place tomorrow, actually with, uh, four applicants that we have for that. Uh, so hopefully by the next council meeting in June, we'll have a certified list prepared for council. And we can talk a little more about the positions and the openings we have in executive session. Uh, just to update on grants, uh, the law enforcement support grant, which is the one we've been talking about, so a little over three-hundred thousand dollars. Going to our new RMS system, uh, new computers in the cars, and other equipment, license plate readers, those type of things. We, it was just awarded within the past, uh, I think it was the end of April, April twenty-eighth. So it was finally awarded, so we can start spending the funds. And, uh, I don't know if Summer wants to address, we wanna talk about the grant funds and how, and how spending, spending will go. We have to pay upfront for any items that we purchase, and then we're reimbursed through the grant. So, uh, the first thing we're going to purchase is the RMS system, because they're at least a year behind in implementation. So, and the grant runs from January first of this year to December thirty-first of twenty-four, so, um, we had to get the contract signed and get that underway, first thing. So we did, uh, we did sign that contract. So, um, what our plan is, is to basically spread out the, the purchases of the, of the different things over the next two years, so we're not spending all the borough's money at one time, wait for reimbursement. It's quarterly reporting, so, you know, it's usually a quick turnaround once we send a report in, the financial report. Uh, next report's due in July.
Can I interrupt you for a second, Chief? That, you mentioned about Summer. Uh, do those expenditures go through Summer, or do they go through, like, your office? When you wanna go purchase the RMS system?
Mm-hmm.
Do you just purchase it, or does that purchase go through Summer?
Well, we coordinate with Summer and say, "Hey, do we have the money available to purchase this item?"
I just don't know who was kind of, you know, administering brilliant funds.
Yeah, we, and Summer is on the, on the grant as an administrator.
Okay.
Um, she's actually going to the financial reports and the reporting on that, so, um, that's how we've been working on it. Like I said, we're coordinating with her, so we're not overextending the borough as far as when we're purchasing.
I assume we were trying to slimline how our expenditures retract and things like that, and great, to all go through?
Yeah, the grant, yeah, the grants are going through.
Okay, great.
And he has, throws those to the laptop open in voice, we wanna know. So it's like a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand right now, that we can put through and, and pay for, if that's okay. To pay out the general fund, and then be reimbursed sometime after July.
Yeah, they, they sent us computers that we didn't order yet. So, they just showed up at our door the other day, and we called the salesman and said, "We didn't order these yet," and he said, "I know you didn't, we just put them on hold, but they sent them to us." So, he said, "We don't have to pay for them right now, we can wait until we're, we're ready to make the purchase," but.
How, how much was the total grant paid?
A little over three-hundred thousand.
I thought, hey, did we get that yet, in our budget? Did, did we get, got the three-hundred-some-thousand yet?
No, we'll, can we get reimbursed as they, as we pay for these?
That's my mistake, yeah. We gotta buy it and reimburse them.
We purchase, we get reimbursed. But, my experience in the past, it's been a pretty quick turnaround once you submit your financial report for that quarter.
My request was, can we, can, do you want to have each purchase come for approval? Because they are, you know, the ones, the laptops are sixty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand, and the RMS system is a hundred-and-three thousand. Do you want each of these purchases to come to council for approval? Or is it okay since the grant's already in place? So just let it in, in?
So we gotta learn where it's going.
Yeah, I would do, I would do it through the finance committee every month. And then, yeah, whatever you need gets approved every month, every month, whenever it needs to be.
And so we have those two approved, when we do those two, the laptops.
Anything over five thousand, or, I, I mean, I'd go to council. I would, I would have you guys do the committee meeting, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Just so you track it, like ARPA, you just, we track it, it's a spreadsheet. I mean, you're gonna get it approved, but I think we just need to, we need to through the proper process, which is through, uh, the finance committee and to the council every month. Unless you get free laptops, just keep coming in, and, you know.
Yeah, they sent them all. Um, yeah, we're trying to stagger the purchases so that they don't want us.
Right.
And we get some of the reimbursement back before we purchase something else.
Yeah.
You said it's quarterly reimbursement, so that's like March, and then you get reimbursed in April? That type of thing?
We don't know yet how.
Oh, okay.
Well, it is quarterly.
How their quarters run.
It's quarterly reporting, yeah. Uh, the first quarter was the end of March. We recorded in April, we didn't have anything in April, in that report, but, uh, it wasn't awarded until April twenty-eighth, so.
All right.
So that's that grant. Um, we're also applying for another federal grant to assist with accreditation. Uh, Rich Light put together an application for that, and did a good job on that. We got some letters of support, uh, from the mayor, from, um, Randy Hughes, and from Congressman Joyce's office. So, hopefully that'll help with that grant. Uh, and that's approximately ninety-two thousand dollars we're applying for with no matching funds. Um, and that one's due, we just submitted it actually today. It was due, it's due on the fifteenth, we won't know anything until August or September. Um, and this is to assist with software that's needed for tracking our policies, um, for all of our accreditation needs. Any equipment we need, like for evidence room, if we need, um, secure storage areas, things like that, that we need for accreditation. Um, so it's an opportunity for us to get federal funding to cover some of those things that, that we would otherwise have to do for accreditation, so. And it also includes consulting, uh, with a firm that consults for accreditation, and actually walks you through the process and helps you through the, the initial accreditation. Um, so, hopefully we get those grant funds that'll assist with that. Um, and I think that's it, other than, uh, like I said, uh, executive session, we can discuss open positions and our testing.
Repression Board, no meeting, so we'll get down to the first one. Mark?
Thank you. Um, there's two proposed ordinances to be considered for adoption tonight. The first one is an increase in the fire tax. Um, it would go up, uh-
Twenty-nine percent, two, probably six, one, seven.
Yeah, to two-point-six-one-seven mils, starting in January of twenty-twenty-four. That's been, been advertised and is ready for consideration, if anyone would care and make a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the fire tax ordinance?
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye?
Can we?
Oh, roll call. Oh, roll call, right. Robert Hammond?
Yes.
Nelson Reeffnack?
No.
Venus Shade?
Yes.
Jim Steele?
Yes.
Aaron Wilson?
Yes.
Affordable.
The second ordinance has to do with sewer rate increases that we were discussed at the last meeting. Um, we would be raising sewer rates effective July one, twenty-twenty-three. It would be the third quarter and fourth quarter billing for twenty-three, and then going forward, um, the minimum rate is, would be ninety-seven thirty-five. And then, if you use, um, in excess of the, the flat rate, it would be ninety-seven thirty-five plus four dollars and thirty-nine cents for each thousand gallons of water used or a part thereof.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
If we need a roll call, listen to, yeah, we can do a roll call, yeah. Robert Hammond?
Yes.
Nelson Reeffnack?
Yes.
Venus Shade?
Yes.
Jim Steele?
Yes.
Aaron Wilson?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you have that resolution, and later on? Would you wanna talk about it now?
Yeah, we can talk about it. Did you talk about the, what's worse, at least the, um-
The, um-
The Pendott one?
Yeah, yeah.
We can do it now, because it's, I'm-
Why don't you do that now?
Trying to find it. I don't know if I have. See, I've got your two legal here.
I, I know I sent it to Rex.
Oh.
I have it here, uh-
I was gonna say, I have it downstairs, you can move it to you.
Well, I mean, really, you just, you don't have to show it. I mean, it just matters you tell them what they're doing or not.
So, like we said, that, what this has to do with really, for tonight, is, uh, getting this contract signed and doing it without going out to bid. So, this resolution recites, and I'm not gonna read it verbatim, but I'll just go through it. During the, uh, during the Pendott program, in advance of that, our, our borough workers did a, um, a inspection of the sewer lines and found that there are sanitary sewer laterals connected to the stormwater system, which result in discharge of raw sewage into Kish Creek or, uh, the Juniata River. We really, I guess, at this point, don't know where. This is important, because the DEP, it does not allow that. So, we had, we, the borough, had to advise DEP that this was going on. They came in and did their own study, and, um, advised the borough that the borough was violating the law by, uh, allowing unauthorized discharge into, of sewage into waters of the Commonwealth. And then, as, as we've already heard from Kim, uh, the borough talked with Hall Baker. Hall Baker gave us this quote, this quote exceeds the, uh, amount that would normally require bidding. So what this requires is using a section of the Borough Code, Section fourteen oh two, um, which says that, essentially, we, this is a emergency situation. We need to remedy this, um, to comply with, uh, what DEP has told us we can't, we have to stop doing, i.e. discharging raw sewer. It's a health and safety impact for, uh, the citizens of, of the borough and of, you know, other municipalities. Um, to remedy this, we have to enter into this contract. And, um, this resolution is the public's notice, um, of the emergency procurement from Hall Baker, and in the amount that, uh, was put up there by, by, uh, Kim of, what, two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand?
Two-forty-eight.
Two-forty-eight, I'm sorry. So, we are, uh, I guess the question is, does council want to adopt this resolution and, and proceed with the repairs without bidding?
But what we have to do first is, I thought that was on the second page. So, we've talked about the Valley Street emergency lateral repair, just a dollar figure. But in order to do the resolution, we have to vote on discussing it, which you just did, and then come back, and then voting on approving it, because it's not on the agenda. And because it involves a contract, it involves money, we gotta make sure it's legal. So, you need to ask council for a vote to discuss it.
I'll make a motion, we discuss.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, that's, you've heard Mark, it's discussed. Now it goes back to you guys, if you wanna approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Oh, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Vote?
And like I said, I got a follow-up meeting with Pendott tomorrow. All right. So that was your, I think-
Thanks, that's all.
Your, yeah, Mark, I think, okay, so, uh, want me to move on to mine?
Yes.
Cost and fee schedule? I, I haven't even done the changes since the last meeting, because as you know, I wasn't even here. But it'll get done. I got all the notes and stuff, I just have to get in and make those changes we talked about, with the dates and, and the stuff. Remember we're talking about the pool and all that stuff? You guys, you guys authorized the changes, I still gotta go in and change everything on document for you guys to prove it. Fire Department, Fame annual funds allocations, um, Summer, is it, how'd you, did you rate that out on the Fire Department's?
Yeah, the Fire Department's are just, uh, a quarterly allocation. I just wanted approval to pay out their quarterly allocation. But also because the Heritage does not have a bank account yet, so they are putting, they are using just the United Bank account. So I just wanted to make sure it was okay that I pay both the, the Brooklyn's and United allocation to the United Bank account for now, until they get their Heritage Bank accounts established.
Yeah, so what it boils down to is seventy, seven thousand five hundred for City and fifteen thousand for Heritage.
So we need a motion on that, Summer, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Eleven fifteen?
I mean, it's a, it's an annual allocation of this.
So, yeah, totally.
I just, I was just asking approval to pay Brooklyn's into the United Bank account, because of being, um-
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually you vote on giving the, the Fire Department their money.
I'll second it.
And then Fame.
Oh, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote?
So, I wanna make sure that-
They're about to pay them also.
Yeah, I wanna, you said Fame?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna make sure you're tracking, she brought up the last second Fame. So, Fame gets a quarterly, or a yearly amount, so this is what they were asking for their yearly amount, so that was part of that too, so.
Right.
How much was it?
There's, there's a twenty-four thousand, and it's, so it would be, um, six thousand for the first quarter.
So Fame is gonna be twenty, twenty-four thousand a year?
Twenty-four thousand, that's what it was, yeah, that's established. I just wanted approval to pay their first quarter.
Okay. All right. Far?
Is, is that, uh, let's make the motion that you approved Fame, too, just in case it didn't make it on the last one.
Yeah.
We have a motion, we have a second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote?
Okay. Fire Department, ARPA funds quote. Which one's this one, Summer?
That's the Whitmer, forty-eight thousand eight seventy-three. The fund data requested they have given you that.
Oh, the huge list of stuff.
Yeah.
Is this all the Co-Star stuff?
Yes.
Yes, I had taken it before the finance committee a week ago.
Yes, it's a separate, it's not approved.
This is for City? This is for City Hook and Ladder?
That's the whole department, that's everybody's consolidated.
Okay, because it says City Hook and Ladder on here, so. So this is the whole Lewis Town Fire Department?
Yes, that's Heritage, City, everything's itemized there, and that's second and third pages.
So you want to take this out of ARPA?
Yes.
So this is, not even doing anything wrong above, so this is forty-nine thousand, sixty thousand for the boiler, that's a hundred thousand. So you guys, I think the Fire Department had roughly a hundred, correct me if I'm wrong, Summer, a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand left in there? Do you remember off the top of your head, Summer, what that was, roughly?
They have, I mean, total, seventy-five?
Okay, so this is take a hundred thousand out of that, so as long as you include the boiler in there, whenever I get the CoStar's quote and this. So I just want to let the council know, because you know, you guys are the ones that are responsible for the tremendous amount of money as far as building expenditures. I have no issue with this, you know, obviously it came from the chief, because I know they need their gear. It's just that you guys just need to know that they'll still have roughly seventy-five thousand dollars after this for other things that come up.
So this is for gear?
This is for gear, so I'll pass this around if you want, because I didn't have this. Is this on their personal file?
Yeah, it was on their personal file.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that's what this was.
Yeah, it's gear, personal gear, yeah, it's gear stuff.
Gloves?
Yes, all parts from protection equipment.
Right.
Each guy had their input, they put in what they're crossing for their stations, and that's all combined.
Right.
I made a motion, we approve that.
One second.
Oh, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
Police Department Grant Spending, you've already covered that, because maybe you can go.
Are they for the purchase?
Yeah, they approved it, too, but just go through the finance committee.
We need to approve the police department purchase.
No.
Well, I didn't know they're approving something now.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're asking if they can get it approved tonight for these two, and then moving forward if it's sent to Finance.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's.
Say a motion.
But wait, here's my question, though. You said we don't get reimbursed until after the quarterly report, right? And our salesperson said it was okay if we didn't pay.
For the computers.
Until...
You are a message, they're expecting us to pay as soon as we sign the contract, we have to pay.
Okay, okay, so...
The computers can be put on hold as far as they have this, but.
Well, because I have the amount of general fund, I guess I should be looking at...
General fund's fine.
Okay, that's what I'm just making sure that we're okay there.
Yeah.
So I see it as two things, you got the RMS and you got the computers, so what's the RMS amount that you want to prove now?
Hundred and two thousand.
How much?
Hundred and two.
How about the computers?
I didn't see the invoice on that.
So what, so are you asking just to do it all at once? Just be done with the computers, just the whole thing?
I was just making sure we had enough general fund before we...
Yeah, I get it, yeah, I get it. I agree. So you're asking for approval of...
Post to the, to the West End?
Well, if something keeps coming up, so.
So, Dave, you're asking best with casing, I don't guess, is you want to get approval to spend, to pay both of those bills, right?
Correct. Okay, then, I'll go with your motion. I'll second Bobby's motion.
Second.
Yep.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Seem to be twenty-twenty-two funds resolution. Enlighten me, Chastity, I'm having a brain fart on this one.
Okay, so that's the last year's application. We allotted those funds to the slip lining project on West Fifth Street. The DCD now has said we need the survey to include all of the Derry Township residents.
So that's not gonna happen.
So that's not gonna happen, so we're asking for just the resolution, the approval to move those funds into the South Side paving project instead.
Okay, so you guys are making a motion to adjust the resolution to be, for the money to be used for the South Side paving project.
I'll make the motion, we adjust the resolution to, of the South Side projects.
Thanks, Chastity.
Thank you.
They still gotta vote, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
Approve the resolution to adjust it to pay for the South Side paving project. West End Slip Line Project revaluation, and I think the bottom line on that is, correct me if I'm wrong, Summer, was basically, we either focus on doing two-hundred thousand dollars of that and a portion of the street, or we just don't do any of it for right now, until we get some money built up in the, with that fee increase, with the sewer rate increase, because then we can use that money to fund that later on down the road.
But my impression was that that was a pretty serious need we had.
The whole area up there is.
I know, but is there a portion of the area that is more desperate?
Yes, we can do the two-hundred thousand in there as a section, we can definitely do that. See, one reason we were planning that project was because it became school.
Right.
Because, yeah, because when they want to develop it, you can't handle EDUs in the development without having those lines fixed, so.
Can I update on that?
Yeah.
It is supposed to be closed on in July.
Oh, great.
It's under contract right now.
See, I didn't know that.
So they are, that came about yesterday.
So buying it.
It's undisclosed at this time.
It must work for Jim Zubler.
Yeah, but there's a company that's planning on buying it and turning it into apartments, and they can't close the line.
Good, I didn't know there was someone buying that, first buyer. But we can do a piece of it, right? We can do a piece, so what I'll do then is you guys, we'll do the adjustment resolution for that, and I'll get with Dawn, and we'll figure out the worst section of that section.
And then will you come back to us?
Yes.
So we don't need to do anything right now, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'll tell you no. Let me, let me get this worked out with Dawn.
Okay.
Teamwork, I love it, all right. Okay, this, this other resolution, number seven, is not needed until this fall. All right, South Side Paving Project, discussion of bids and alternates, let me pull this up. This is really confusing, made a lot of conversations I missed today. So basically, you look at all the bids on here and all the alternates, this is what we're looking at, I think it's the three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, correct me if I'm wrong, Summer? Just all add up now, because we had an issue with the charts today, making sure they're all adding up. So I talked to Lucas, and he said we want to get everything approved, including the alternates, which is what I just showed you.
Okay.
And a three forty-four, and that's where we transfer some of the money over from the Fifth Street project to pay for this, and then that leaves some of our state liquid fuels money open for other stuff we can use it for. So basically, the council would approve the contract and all, all alternates.
And the total is at the bottom, correct?
Yeah, three forty-four, that was just the base bid. You originally approved the base bid, that's, that's what I saw.
Right.
And then so we're gonna do the alternates, which is still the lowest, which is right here.
That particular page, Kim, is only the paving, the ADA ramps is a separate. ADA ramp, lowest bid was G and R Charles excavating a hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
On top of that?
On top of that, yes.
Jeez, geez.
See, I'm staying out.
Coming down, business.
We're in the wrong mood. Yeah, we are, but I'm staying out, because I don't know what I'm asking for now, Chastity, because Lucas isn't here, and they couldn't make the bidding, they had the charts wrong.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a stick to that, I make that up.
So I'm leaving out the...
So, wait, I'm, Chastity?
Yes.
Since you seem to be the one who knows, is this something we need to do today, since we're not sure on the amount?
Yes, we have the totals. So, because Summer and I are right here.
Hit us with the totals.
So CDVG has, including moving the money from Fifth Street into this particular project, we will be paying for three-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, ninety-six dollars towards the project.
Three-hundred-and-fifty-two, nine oh six?
Oh, nine six.
So what does that, I have that lots of balance for Lewis Town Borough of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, ninety-six dollars.
I have our three CDVG funds, total of three sixty.
We have a thousand dollars in our cost for, yes.
That puts our state liquid fuels cost, we have the engineering fees, did you have that in there, the eighteen?
No, we do not cover engineering.
So our state liquid fuels cost would be about a hundred and eighty-six thousand of our funds.
Okay, so...
So we have three sixty-four.
What's the total?
The total I have is five forty, five hundred and forty-five thousand, nine fifty-two.
And I have the engineering.
Yes.
And three-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, ninety-six of that would come from CDVG, and the others would come from state liquid fuels?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We originally were gonna spend around eighty-four thousand in state liquid fuels.
Great, but now, since we have to bring the money, right, I got you.
And we have the CDVG money, that puts us up to one eighty, one, just close to one ninety.
Okay, just making sure we're all covered there, too.
But we have that in, in the state liquid fuels.
Okay, great.
Just as an FYI, the, I went back and looked at the original budget that we had prepared. We prepared three-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, and bids committed four-hundred-and-forty-four. Yeah. That far over. We're seeing that consistently with all of our projects.
This is great. Okay, so we need a motion for that, don't we?
Yes. We need a motion.
Yeah, 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 well, I should know, whatever.
South Side, South Side paving with alternates?
Yeah, yes.
With the total amount being five forty-five, nine fifty-two?
Yes.
CDVG funds of three fifty-two, oh nine six, and state liquid fuels of one seventy-five, oh nine six.
More than that, it's more than that, but I also didn't know about the eight thousand dollar, so it's same one ninety-five, two hundred and ninety-five, you know, estimated one hundred and ninety-five thousand.
And we have the funds to cover all of that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the South Side paving project bids with all the alternates.
Oh, in favor?
We gotta have a second.
I was getting there. Oh, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
The next two, the next two things on here are executive session. I didn't have anything else on my list, too.
Do you want any public comment before we go into executive session? Okay, we all have to leave, do we?